That's about perfect. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. I call the City Council Committee of the whole meeting for August 4th to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Alderman Jobson, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Brian, City Clerk, if you'd please call the roll call. Call the roll call. Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobson.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
And President, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Committee of the whole meeting. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing on any particular electronic device. We certainly and respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with fellow Davenporters in the room and everyone around the region. We're happy you're participating in the city government and ask that you please understand that you were reflecting to everyone the common desire that we all share to make Davenport a better place. At this time, if you do have a cellphone, especially the folks in here, like me, if you put it on silent or turn it off simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody coming up and talking. If you want to address the council, there's the podium. Please come to that. The microphone's above you. We'd love you to give your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When addressing the council, please address us as a body and not as any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you very much. City Administrator Corey Spiegel, any update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll move right into public hearings. We have three public hearings under Public Works. Alderman Dunn, Alderman Doorman will take care of those. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG alley program, alley reconstruction project from 1310 Kirkwood Boulevard to 1810 Esplanade Avenue pending HUD approval. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG alley program, alley reconstruction project for the Pershing Avenue and Tremont Avenue alleys pending HUD approval. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And I open the third and final public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Hillandale Road and Research Parkway intersection improvement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And this public hearing is closed. And back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So we'll move to the next item, which is petitions and communications from Alderman. Anyone this evening? Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just simply, this upcoming Tuesday, August 10th, we'll conduct a six-word meeting, 6:30 PM at Duck Creek Park Lodge. We'll have our library director, Amy Grosskopf, there to provide a presentation and then have a little discussion thereafter. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. All right, moving on. We have four areas for discussion: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. So we'll go right to those. The first one is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead that. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenson on behalf of Rock Church Ministries, Inc., to rezone Lot 2 of NIMs Acres from SOS Open Space District to R1 Single Family Residential District. Planning and zoning commission recommends denial. Eight votes are required for passage. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? All right. We've discussed this at length. We've put off the vote to ensure that we have a full council when we do the vote. Hopefully, that will take place next week. I think we've had as much discussion as we probably need to have, and we need to get on with the voting, so that'll happen next week. This item will remain on discussion. Item number two, resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property, 1006 Warren Street, parcel G0035-41. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this resolution? Anyone from the council? That item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving the appeal of the Design Review Board's denial of case DR 20-35, request for design approval for unscreened HVAC at Modern Woodman Park. A yes vote overturns Design Review Board decision. A no vote upholds their decision. Before we ask for public with comment, I was going to have Clay from Public Works come up and explain the process that is bringing this motion before the council this evening.
Clay, Mayor, Public Works. So with our HVAC project at Modern Woodman Park, we had a couple of options of how to strategically place the units on top of the roof. One of the units that staff preferred and then our consultant preferred was to put 14 individual units on the roof that's closest to the field. Those units would sit about about six foot seven inches in height. And then at that point, we would ask, because it's in the downtown district, that we ask for no screening. At that portion of the roof, it's hard from a structural standpoint to put that level of weight on there, and the structural engineer that's on our consultant team actually recommended that we not. But that'd be the best overall option for that system is to do those individual units. So that's what we requested to the DRB. Could we have that exemption to forego the screening? One of the things for DRB is they request in the downtown if you have mechanical units that are visible on the roof that you need to have them screened. So we put that request before them. If we were to perhaps not do the one, so in this case, the DRB voted denial of the request, we would probably go back to another option, which would be putting a centralized number of units closer on the roof. The roof, if anyone's been up on it, is actually sloped, so it's the higher, the closer to the parking lots you get, the higher the roof is. We would actually, and that's the newer section, we'd actually have to put a system of HVAC units on that section to handle the load. It would have to sit on top of a steel frame, and then it would have to have that framing system. That would then be about 14 feet tall. So one of the reasons why staff recommended it to the DRB is we feel a 14-foot-tall, 16-foot-wide, screened-in HVAC system would deter from the overall appearance of what we have at our stadium, rather than naturally blending in as something as a mechanical unit on a rooftop. So that was the reason why we're kind of in the standing before you here today.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, Clay. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item this evening? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council cares to comment? Alderman Condon?
Clay, I'm sorry. This might be a question for you. I've been tracking this item, but maybe didn't gain an appreciation. It's six feet tall, and we're gonna forego screening. Will the average pedestrian down at the ballpark be able to spot things?
There is existing mechanical equipment on the rooftop now, and it's about four foot two inches. So you're looking about an additional two feet of height of what you currently have there. I think if you, it's one of those things, if you look up at the roof and you stare at it, I think you will see it. I think most normal people, as you walk by, you won't be able to see it. A lot of times, we look at what's the aesthetic look like from the street. In this case, River Drive, if you're going by on River Drive, we have hanging baskets, we have streetscaping. We have a number of options that you probably, the normal eye would not look to a mechanical unit on top of a rooftop. That's kind of a normal appearance.
And screening doesn't seem like it's a substantial weight, but that was enough to tip the scale.
It would be. And we had a letter from our structural engineer stating that they would prefer, if we were to screen, that we would do it on the newer section of the roof, which is closer to the road, which, once again, because of the pitch of the roof, would then make it higher.
I understand. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we're worried about people looking at the air conditioning. If you go to a Bandits game, you're gonna watch the Bandits play great baseball. You're not gonna focus on air conditioners. You know, this is Design Review Board. I'm a little surprised that even come up with this.
Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. So these are just pretty much guidelines, aren't they? I mean, they're not, and how many buildings actually downtown have screened air conditioning units or?
If I could, Mr. Chair, I have part of that answer for Alderman Dunn.
Yes, please.
As I read these guidelines, as far as a rooftop installation of a mechanical, unless there's a seating area on that roof, that this is just a mere suggestion to help visually screen it. What those guidelines seem to be aimed at are the street-level situations where you would have mechanicals at street level or dumpsters where you'd want to screen those and keep them away from pedestrians and seating areas for restaurants.
Good, Rick.
Just one more question. Does anybody know what this is gonna cost?
Current estimate of the project, I'm gonna assume no screening system and 14 individual units. It's a little over $1 million. If we were to go with the system, that's the option that is more centralized, that with a screening and steel structure, you're probably adding another $150,000 onto the project. And that's obviously assuming commodity prices right now, which are a little wild.
All right. Thank you. The only thing I had to add, Alderman Condon, is we were talking about this one at length in our community development meeting, and you will be able to see it from River Drive. So if you stood on the sidewalk at River Drive, you would be able to see these different units on top of the roof. As you walk towards the stadium just before the railroad tracks, you would stop seeing them, if that helps you at all. So, all right. This item will stay on discussion, and I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Alderman Gripp, I move to put one, items one and three, on the discussion agenda, and two on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area for discussion is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman will lead that. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the public safety agenda is second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only by adding 16th Street along the north side from 70 feet east of Division Street, east 25 feet. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Please step to the podium, state your name, ward or address.
I'm Jill Charlton. I live in Fourth Ward, and a friend about the safety. I got a friend, she's afraid to apply for one in resident, and people are blocking at 4 something, West 14th Street blocking her driveway. She gets upset about it. She's afraid if she do it, she's getting in trouble. But from Game Street all the way out to Ripley, put a resident parking sign. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our traffic engineer and some of the neighbors met on Monday. And this, yeah, I would ask the council to suspend the rule and pass this next week because the tension is getting very intense in this neighborhood over this parking. There's a lot of rental property with tenants that, you know, don't have adequate parking, so they're parking all over the place. So I would ask the council to consider suspending the rules next week on behalf of the good neighbors of the Fourth Ward and pass it. Thanks.
Just for a point of clarification, so are we asking for a motion now and looking for a second? All right. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. That, I'm a little bit confused by Alderman Ambrose's thing for moving this quickly. The people parking, the renters, are also residents. I mean, we don't distinguish between whether someone's is a property owner or is renting in the neighborhood, correct? So I'm not sure. Is it, I don't know. Well, I'm not opposed to doing resident parking, but I'm just, I don't understand about the renters, because renters are residents of the neighborhood as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council wishing to speak on this? So now can I ask my clarification question as a novice on this? So?
Mr. Chair, I think you're on the right track. The question is, is that a motion by Alderman Ambrose that he's looking for a second on?
I'll do it now. I'd like to have a move.
Second.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed, same sign? Now we have a roll call, though?
Yeah, Brian, please do a roll on the motion. Just gonna go in order here. Dunn?
Yes.
Doorman?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Lee?
No.
Gripp?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
And Ambrose?
Yes.
So six yeses and four nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, that was fun. That item will move on. On to item number two. First ordinance, or first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11, Chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only by adding 12th Street along the south side in front of 1701 East 12th Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, resolution approving the city's grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation's Traffic Safety Improvement Program for a traffic safety study at the intersection of Brady Street and 65th Street slash Veterans Memorial Parkway and authorizing the mayor to sign the application. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. I want to thank Public Works and the traffic folks for putting this up. I had done a little study myself of just that intersection and found 11 problems, and I'd forgotten one when I put in the memo. So I really appreciate you going after some money to try to fix this very complex problem, dangerous problem, and already having fixed a couple of things that I identified as well. So I'm very grateful, and the folks over there are too. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can someone explain exactly what this is? Is this for a study of the intersection? Or is this for intersection upgrades?
This would be for a study of the intersection of potential upgrades. 100% of the cost could be applied to the Iowa Department of Transportation. So there's potential where the city doesn't have any costs associated with the study.
So can you explain what kind of study this will be?
Of course. They'll look at traffic flows. We'll look at accident history. That intersection has quite a bit of accidents because of the nature of how it's set up. And then we'll try, like, is there a better way for us to engineer a different solution that maybe cuts down on congestion as well?
All right. Thanks.
Seeing no one else from council, that item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving street lane public ground closures on the list of dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read all of these and then ask for public and council comment. First, Downtown Davenport Partnership, alternating currents downtown, 6:00 AM Thursday, August 19th, 2021 to 12:00 PM Sunday, August 22nd, 2021. Closure, Dillon Fountain East Parking Lot, 100 West River Drive. Next, Palmer College of Chiropractic Homecoming, 1,000 Brady Street, 6:00 AM Wednesday, September 15th, 2021 through 10:00 PM Sunday, September 19th, 2021. Closure, two easternmost travel lanes on Brady Street from 8th Street to Palmer Drive. Next, Mississippi Valley Blues Society, 2021 Mississippi Valley Blues Festival, Leclerc Park, 10:00 AM Thursday, September 16th, 2021 through 12:00 PM Sunday, September 19th, 2021. Closures, Harrison and Ripley Streets, south of River Drive. Next, Angie Logan, Crest Hill Drive Neighborhood Block Party, 719 Crest Hill Drive, Saturday, September 25th, 2021, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Closure, Crest Hill Drive from Brookview Lane to 6833 Silver Creek Drive. And that was the last one. Anyone from public wishing to comment on that item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Next is motion approving noise variance requests for events on the list of dates and times. Again, I'll read all items, then ask for public and council comment. Downtown Davenport Partnership, alternating currents, various locations downtown until midnight each night, Thursday, August 19th, 2021 through Sunday, August 22nd, 2021. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Hope at the Brick House Neighborhood Block Party, 1431 Ripley Street, Friday, August 20th, 2021, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Jeremy Nemmers Neighborhood Party, 849 Colony Drive, Saturday, August 21, 2021, 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Brittany Fleming, Glendale Neighborhood Block Party, 4007 Glendale Boulevard, Saturday, September 11th, 2021, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Mississippi Valley Blues Society, 2021 Mississippi Valley Blues Festival, Leclerc Park, 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Friday, September 17th, 2021, and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, 18th, 2021. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. And last, under this item, Angie Logan Crest Hill Drive Neighborhood Block Party, 719 Crest Hill Drive, Saturday, September 25th, 2021, 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? And the last item under public safety, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read the two new license, and then the annual license renewals are listed for people's review. First is toasted, 118 East Fourth Street, license type Class C liquor, and Tequila's Bar and Lounge, 1720 East Kimberly Road, outdoor area, license type Class C liquor. Is anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? And I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that item one be placed on discussion to be voted on next week, and all other items placed on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed, same sign. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Next item is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have nine items this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG alley program, alley reconstruction from 1310 Kirkwood Boulevard to 1810 Esplanade Avenue pending HUD approval. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG alley program, alley reconstruction project for the Pershing Avenue and Tremont Avenue alleys pending HUD approval. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have someone from staff to explain the HUD alley program. It sounds new.
Bruce Brigger, Community and Economic Development. Yes, this is an effort to use some of our, what I'll call, regular community and development block grant funds to be able to do some infrastructure improvements. So we did take a look at trying to do some additional alleys that we wouldn't normally have the funding to be able to do. There are a lot of boxes to check for qualifying for the federal funds, so it's a little difficult sometimes to do that year in and year out, and it's expensive. But this is one year that we thought it might be something worth trying. So, yeah, it is a little bit new. We'll see how this first kind of pilot goes.
So Bruce, we have a lot of alleys in our older neighborhoods that have deteriorated. And this is the first time we've used this HUD program. Who picked the alleys?
It was a group effort with staff from Community Economic Development, as well as Public Works, and I think some others, too. There are a lot of federal factors that really limit income levels. You have to survey residents. It needs to be a primarily residential alley, blah, blah, blah. There are a lot of things on the federal side. And then condition-wise, obviously, from a public work standpoint, which alleys are perhaps the most suited for urgent repairs. So kind of a team effort to try to identify that.
Well, we know we have a lot of alleys, then. It'd be exciting if we get the federal government to step up and help in our older neighborhoods. I'm excited to see how it turns out. So this is paid 100% by the federal government?
Yes. Yes. As a pilot, we thought we'd try that first, just to see how many hiccups we ran into. And, yeah, so far, so good.
So they're gonna mill it down and put in, what is it, two, three inches of fresh asphalt? All right.
I'm giving the thumbs up, yeah, from Public Works.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Hillandale Road and Research Parkway intersection improvement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving a preconstruction agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the bridge deck replacement on Division Street over Interstate 80. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Could someone from staff come up and explain a preconstruction agreement and, oh, preconstruction agreement and how that relates to what would actually be done on the ground and who would be paying for it?
So, Clay, right, Public Works. One of the things of the DOT request is for work performed, even though it's their structure, is an agreement between us and them. This doesn't obligate us from a monetary standpoint. I actually think this is a really good news story. Originally, they were gonna do just some patching on the bridge, but what with what we call Project Scrabble, moving forward in the increased number of traffic, they actually realized that, okay, they found funds within their budget, and then now, instead of doing some small patching, which they will do this fall and winter, this spring, they're gonna come and then do a full deck replacement. So we were able to leverage some of what's happening on Project Scrabble. It's actually getting a full deck replacement on this project.
And DOT is paying for that?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution accepting work completed under the Duck Creek Trail resurfacing Division Street to Marquette Street project by Minats Incorporated of Eastern Iowa Division Comanche, Iowa, in the amount of $154,966.77. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the 2021 Crack and Seat Program to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $857,986.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the blanket contract for the purchase of hot mix asphalt to Minats Incorporated, Eastern Iowa Division of Comanche, Iowa, and Riverstone Group Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is motion awarding the blanket contract for the purchase of calcium chloride for the 2021-22 winter season to Sicaldo Limited of Hillsdale, Illinois, as the primary provider, and Jericho Services of Indiana, Indiana, Iowa, and as the backup provider. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number nine is motion ratifying change order number five for the Black Hawk Creek Stabilization Project contract with five cities construction of Coal Valley, Illinois, in the amount of $68,270.61. And I would ask, could we have somebody come up from staff and give us an update on this project?
Yes, sir. So part of this project had a pretty substantial block retaining wall associated with it. Turns out, once we got into the site, it actually needed to be a lot larger, both on both in its depth and its length than what was needed. So we needed to make sure we had the engineering behind it to make sure whatever it is we do build is there to stay. So we have all that settled. That did take a little while, and we apologize to the residents that that affected. This would be to add the additional quantities needed to make sure that we build that appropriate size retaining wall.
So do we have a completion date?
I don't have one off the top of my head, but I will get one for you and have it emailed tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all nine items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes Public Works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I will ask the folks in the room, if you're having conversations in the back or anywhere else, if you'd please step out to the hallway so we can conduct what we're doing. Thank you. All right, the next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Miller will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving a contract for the purchase of a one-hundred-foot platform fire truck from Stepfan Corp. of Amlin, Ohio, in the amount of approximately one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety-six cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Item number two is a resolution accepting the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, year two of three AmeriCorp's program grant from the Corporation for National and Community Services in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, and authorizing the finance director or designee to sign the grant agreement to be managed and implemented by the Davenport Parks and Recreation Department. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. The AmeriCorp program is a great program, and I'm really happy to see the city of Davenport and the Parks Department using this program and leveraging this amount of money to really help work on our programs and projects within the parks.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution establishing the dates and times for the annual Halloween parade and trick-or-treating as Saturday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty PM, and Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, four thirty to seven PM, respectively. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? And item number four is a resolution accepting the annual Burn Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG, from the federal government for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Staff request suspension of the rules and a vote later on this agenda. Anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Council? Next, we have purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand. We don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed here on the agenda for your information. Alderman Miller, would you please set the agenda?
I move that we place all four items on the consent agenda. Oh, fourth item goes, oh, fourth item goes on discussion agenda for... Oh, and I proposably move that we vote later on this actual item, the fourth item. All those in favor?
Who's around the show? All opposed?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm just a little stymied. Yeah, so, yeah. We're going to vote later on this agenda item, and thank you.
Okay, so items one through three are on consent. Item number four was a motion and approved to be voted on later in the agenda. And that will conclude finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. So the next area is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. We do have one. So first, to put it on and to talk about it, we need to suspend the rules. There's a motion and a second to suspend. Brian, if you'd please call the roll to suspend the rules.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
And Ambrose. Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. So the rules are suspended, so we can discuss. And I'll read, resolution accepting the annual Burn Justice Assistance Grant from the federal government for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Is there any public with comment? Motion and a second, any discussion? Very good. Brian, real call, please, on this resolution.
Miller?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That resolution's adopted. So the next item, is there any public with business? If anybody'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Microphones above you will have five minutes. Please give your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sheila Parker Wilson. I'm from Davenport. I came here to, I would like to thank the mayor and the clusters for all the help they have done on regards to East Thirty-Fifth Residence. I'm part of the residents of East Thirty-Fifth Street, and I would like to say, thirty days ago, I came before you all with the request of helping us. I thank y'all for the help, for the people that qualified for help, that met the requirements. I also thank y'all for the people, like myself as well, and other residents that still left there that doesn't meet the requirements. I know y'all did all y'all say y'all can do, but you know what? Here we go again. So last week, I talked about how I did an interview in the park now from the shelter. In that day, it was house of action. Our homes, our voices. It was May first through the eighth, two thousand and eighteen. I pass one of these around to everyone that participated at the park down the street from the homeless shelter. I spoke from my heart, and I speak, the words come out of my mouth that come from Jesus. I'm spiritual, and that's what I believe. And on the back of this, it say, quality housing is a key to success. You own the key to, you own the key to your city. Make the difference here. Our input is key to change, key into possibility. Key into change, we can change. Guess what? When I came here fourteen years ago, humility of merit, at the time, and the sisters of humility, helped me get on my feet to be successful. I went to school, I did all I did. I went to school, I got the certificates I need. I brought my children down. They graduated from Central. I got two graduates from Central. Yay, they did a great job. But the things that I had to do, the clusters in account, all the clusters, all the phone calls, thirty days. Here we go again, Stan. The hourglass has started over again. I got another thirty days, but I'm in the same situation just because of pretenses. I had a major surgery. Before that, I had another major surgery. But guess what? I'm still standing be here for you. The reason why I'm here today, not to waste y'all time or mine, but I need enlightened, this is to enlighten. My key word is change. This has changed my life so, so dearly. But guess what? It ain't did it for the worst, it did it for the best. Because you know what? Through these last few days, I turned off the cell phone, I turned off the TV, I turned off the noise. I turned off and been in silence. And guess what I came up with? It's if it's right, I fight. I don't fight a battle that I can't win. This battle is not just for me. I'm trying to make sure everyone that's surrounded around me to get a place to stay. I have people left with kids that's getting emails every day to register their kids. How can they register their kids if they don't even have an address to register to? They don't know what district to go to. This is a shame. When I came here fourteen years ago and got introduced to Davenport, all I seen was broken-down buildings and homeless people. I come from a big city. Every city I have traveled to, because I'm a successful person that can afford vacation, just like everyone else, and I go and see downtown. Downtown is like the main outset of where you go when you go out of town. So therefore, that's when it comes to the six million dollars about a park. Y'all want visitors to come, tourists to come, and guess what they're gonna see? On the riverfront, all downtown, from Washington Street on back, they're gonna see people sitting on the street when they're going to this park, walking through the bus station, going to the river, they're gonna see homeless people. What look is that gonna put on the city of Davenport that the tourists come and all they see is broken-down buildings and homeless people? And then here now today, I hear about screens and how a building is gonna look from the river. And here it is, not just me, but it's hundreds of people. And from now, from Thirty-Fifth to Crestwood, now at Sixty-first, and now it's finna be some of the buildings downtown. People is being displaced in this city, and nothing is doing, no one is doing anything morally to make it happen. And I know the buzz is going off, but I wanna say, a wise man once said, that how can you sleep? And a wise woman once said, I can't because I don't have a key. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Septima. I also live, Septima Hoskins. I also live in the Seventh Ward. I'm a Thirty-Fifth Street resident. Here to, I have two things today that I needed, you know, to say. One was about just affordable housing in Davenport. At this point, I just don't see where the affordable housing is in this city. The median income, according to the census, was like twenty-one thousand dollars. If the rent isn't upwards of a thousand dollars, it's about twelve thousand dollars a year to pay rent. You left with nine thousand dollars just to live. I don't see where our income level in this city adds up with the rent amount, you know, the things that are going on. So I'm just saying, like, you know, the city focusing on getting affordable housing should be something that, you know, we should be looking at. If you look at your median income, you look at the rent, the way the rent is going up around here, how are these people going to afford to live and survive? It's just not even living, it's surviving. They still have to feed their children, put gas in their car, pay their insurance, and different things like that. Another thing is, I just feel like about eighty-five percent of the residents that are gonna put out, probably more than eighty-five, are minority. I don't know if that's gentrification or redlining, but it just doesn't seem right. I just, I can't get, you know, put my finger on that. Another thing is, just the maintenance issues. This is just my last thing. This is when I moved in, I still have these same issues, same. And they're all water leaks, all. So if my water's leaking in my tub after two years, I could pretty much say there's mold somewhere growing, you know? My lights flicker upstairs. Since the people have moved out, my toilet barely flushes because all the suck pumps are now off, and my basement is flooding. So, you know, it's just, I still wanna know who in the city allowed this property to get this dilapidated, that I have to live like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Willie Shorter, living five oh one West Third. You guys sold this building, the Harris Building, to this slumlord where our trash has been bagged up for the last three weeks. Our garbage smells in our apartment. We have nets and flies. I can't even go into my apartment because our keypad don't work. And then yesterday, I come home to my apartment and can't get in, and a guy's standing there with a gun trying to shoot me. So then, when I called the police, the police came and pulled the guns on me and threatened to shoot me, threatened to kill me. I reported it all. At the same time, I'm telling him to check the cameras, the police, and study talking about shoot me. And the guy hit the gun in the bushes. And one of the tenants in the building helped me hide the butcher. Then the police had nerve to tell the property manager that they was gonna, he recommended them to put me out when I called the police. But if I would've had my gun there, which I can't bring it in there because it's a federal-funded building, it would've been two dead people there yesterday. And they better pray to God that I didn't have one in my hand. Now this guy's threatening me, so I'm going up on this hill tonight. And I have my family with me. He got one time to come anywhere near me. Because when I called the police, I didn't get no help. I got a gun in my face. And I've been calling you guys about the trash. Nobody did. I took pictures of it, I took a video from the eleventh floor, and I followed it all the way down to all the shoes is piled up with trash, and it stinks bad. Six months, and then y'all have a city worker come there and said that you guys said y'all didn't care nothing about what was going on in this building. I have it all on, all on record of this guy, of the city from this building and from the garbage people talking real bad about how they dropped the ball on both sides. And then I have mold that they keep painting over, and come to find out that the sprinklers was leaking. So that's the reason all this mold is coming in in our apartments. And I've been telling y'all about that from twenty fifteen, and nobody's did nothing. And here it is, twenty twenty-one. And I have to worry about the police killing me and somebody else killing me. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be one today. Because I'm going up on the hill when I leave from here, and I'm waiting. He pulled it yesterday, and y'all let him get away. And all y'all had to do was check them cameras. Every time I ask y'all to check the cameras or talk to me, y'all won't talk to me because y'all keep ignoring me. Y'all keep ignoring me. I just want you to know that. And if you wanna hear what the guys are saying about the garbage, I can play it for you. So tomorrow, my lawyer, my mom, and my pastor will be coming filing a complaint against the police department, and y'all talk about gun violence. That was some police brutality yesterday. And if it wasn't for the old folks begging me to get down, I was not getting down, and the police study stood there with that gun. And I looked down his barrel, and he study said he was gonna put me down right where I stand. And I still stood there. I refused to get down until this lady come over and asked me to get on my knees. And I still refused to put my hands behind my head. Now y'all have the police body cams, and you'll see four guns on me. And then if you go and check that video, you will see where he hid that gun and how he was, how he pulled his gun. See, I follow the rules here, but other people doesn't. So I almost lost my life yesterday. But it would never happen like that again, and the police would never get a chance to pull a gun on me again like that after I called. And I meant what I said. Y'all gonna have to kill me to silence.
Mr. Shorter, please be careful of the threats.
Ain't nobody threatening you, man. I've been calling you for the longest, and you never answer.
And we've talked a lot.
Okay, then, then answer the questions, then, when I answer them to you.
Have a good day, Mr. Shorter.
No, this is what y'all do to us every time we come in here.
We've talked a lot.
Yeah, yeah, we talked a lot, but it was nothing, never done.
Please, thank you. You're done.
No, because all your policemen like to come, and y'all like to pull guns and do things. I'm waiting on something to happen to me up in here today. But we gonna, it is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter.
Because all y'all sit here know what these people's going through, what we is going through.
Mr. Shorter, thank you.
Yeah, I will be out in front of the police department, and the City Hall.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do y'all job.
Thank you.
Do your job.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name is Maurice Hughes, and I live in the same building Mr. Shorter lived in. I have recordings of late now of saying, Monday, it's Monday. She said the people be there Monday at four-thirty. I called the newspaper myself. I called the news people myself, I said I'm gonna give her adequate time to come Monday at four thirty, so they didn't come till today. And the garbage chute is right here behind my apartment, I have septic, also asthma. This garbage situation in this building is totally out of control, I mean, stuff is over there totally out of control. I've been over here quite a few times with them, Mr. Shorter, and I've seen the things that y'all talk about. And it's not fair the way, like you say, these people living there, we living over there. It's good if I didn't take our real money, but it's not cool to help out. It's cool, take our money. Now, put y'allself in your position, please, do that. Please, I mean, I live in better places, I live in Penitent Tisch better than I live now in these apartments. I'm done with y'all for real.
Thank you, anyone else? See, okay.
Yes, my name is Marilyn Lehman, I live at seventeen twenty-four East Thirty-first Street. What I'm here to discuss this evening, uh, I'm sorry, Ward seven, um, Dr. Miller. Um, what I'm here to discuss this evening is that in the last week, one of the East Thirty-second, uh, citizens, the neighbors, posted on the Nextdoor application that the city is in the process of installing speed bumps to slow traffic on East Thirty-second Street. Well, East Thirty-first Street.
Pardon me, ma'am. In one second, thank you, please continue.
Okay. Um, the people on East Thirty-first Street, we have filed petitions, we have been in, in contact with Patrick, who is the former ward. Um, we, the, we filed on the buses, we're not being notified when these changes are coming about. What is of major concern to us right now is if you put speed bumps on East Thirty-second Street, we're the next street down, it is gonna force all of that traffic onto our street, and we are already inundated. We get the ambulances, we get the fire trucks, we get semis, which I've asked for a sign to limit the size of the, um, trucks that can go on that street. We've got regular semis going down our street, we're living in a residential area. The, the bottom line is, if you put speed bumps on East Thirty-second, then you have got to put speed bumps on East Thirty-first, or you are gonna force all of that traffic over onto our street, and we are already inundated. I mean, they are going anywhere from forty to fifty miles an hour down that street. Um, one of the neighbors is the chief of police's brother. He called personally and requested for assistance, because we, we can't control it. We've talked about actually buying speed bumps and putting them out there ourselves, and we've been told that we can't do it. Um, please, look at the safety, enjoyment, and property values of our street as well. If you are gonna protect the homes up on East Thirty-second Street, then for heaven's sakes, do the same with us, because you raised our property values, our taxes this year. I, I was in here back in April, I'm the lady with the twenty-four percent increase. So, um, that's what we're asking for. Uh, we want to know, we want to be made aware of when these changes are coming down. If I had not seen the posting on the Nextdoor application, we never would've known until these things are put in, and we were having to deal with the daily issues of the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, Ward four. Davenport, good to see you all again. Um, we talked, last week's meeting, there was a very healthy and vigorous discussion about, um, the Destination Playground, or the Child's Playground, however you call it, uh, at the foot of, uh, between Brady, between Brady and Perry, and, uh, south of the tracks, and, uh, I guess everybody's seen the email that I sent you that I said at that point, I think Antoine Leclerc, our city's founder, would be pleased to see his namesake park, our finest park, be a public living room, where people of all ages and backgrounds could celebrate friends, food, music, theater, and art on the banks of our glorious Mississippi. And then I go on to say where I feel that the Destination Park, as it's currently been envisioned, is unwise for the reasons, just because quickly, you all have seen it, it's too small, it's a very small fraction of Maggie Daley Park, and then once you berm around the perimeter to get it above the floodplain, you get even less net area, uh, less than an acre and a half that we currently have, which is only seven percent of Maggie Daley Park. So it's a waste of land, it disrespects the river. Um, all this area was filled, originally, Front Street was our, uh, was the end of the, where the, the river started, and, uh, back a hundred and twenty years ago, everything south of what's now River Drive was, was filled, a hundred and twenty acres. Eugene Boynton, the, uh, public health director at the time, was responsible, it was a good thing overall. Uh, but it, it disrespects the river in that we'd be raising two-thirds of a city block above the floodplain, when there's really no reason for it. If you have a good reason, and you have no other choices, then, then go ahead and do it. In fact, I'm gonna propose raising a, a fraction of that area above the floodplain myself. But, uh, if there are other places to put that park above the floodplain, let's consider it. I think, uh, it's been mentioned, I think, another place where it might be a superior location would be at the, uh, the plaza right across to the west of the Figgy. We've got a little more, I think more than a half block there. Um, if indeed the, uh, playground equipment is going to be not something out of the shelf, but something that's very custom, something almost like a public sculpture, I can see, and perhaps it is used by all ages, perhaps that's a better location, it's above the floodplain, we've got parking next to the parking garage. Uh, the, uh, the transportation building, if it becomes a, uh, public market, like I, I advocated, it'd be the center of our downtown. So I think that's a better location. So let's, with that, with that out of the way, I'm proposing an improvement to our riverfront that I think will definitely be something that would attract those people that are visiting Davenport for the first time off, off those Viking and other cruise lines, which is something that everyone had, I think it's said for the last sixteen years, since our beautiful, uh, skybridge was opened. There needs to be something at the end of it, there needs to be something at the end of it. If you, I think if there was a, a pall of our citizens, do you wanna see a playground right there? Or do you wanna see something at the end of the skybridge? I think overwhelmingly, they'd say, even if they have kids, they'd say, let's have something at the end of the skybridge. So this is something I, I came up with, spent a lot of time on it, it's a design for a building at the end of the skybridge. It isn't right in front of it, it is not a curved thing, it's something very modest. It may look big, but it is not a big building. It's about a hundred and fifty feet long, but at this point, it's about a hundred feet, maybe a hundred and ten. But what it provides is the river. I think, again, I, I don't hear enough of Mississippi River, I hear things at the side of it, but we're forgetting, people are coming to see the river, and if we can enhance the river experience, that's gonna be golden for us, because ideas are, I mean, architect, ideas are like a dime a dozen, but good ideas, you know, they're worth, Kathy Wine knows that, when she lit the Centennial Bridge forty years ago. What did that cost? I don't know, not very much compared to what is given our, our city. That's the kind of thing I'm looking for, not how much we spend, but how much we get. So this building, obviously it pays a debt to the Figgy, um, but on the other hand, the Figgy, there's nothing new about it. The, the window spacing, as far as I know, Chipperfield may have been waiting for his plane and, and saw the Quad City Airport. Well, anyway, I'll send you information about this.
Please finish, Mr. Handel.
And we'll, uh, we'll talk about it in the future, all right? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I spoke last week, Ron Swiner, two, three, six, six, West Forty-seven. Some of you don't like to listen to me, I don't really care, to be honest. I fought for the last nine years to make Davenport a little better, after my son was killed. But we have a city that failed, our citizens, the taxpayers, our police department, because we have not adequately funded what we need. We've had to call in other departments during crisis. State troopers. We're having issue getting officers now, why? Because of the situation, the times? But to say, oh, five million dollars, let's do a little more renovation on our park, stadium? Six million dollar park? I challenge the city to make every citizen feel a little safer. My wife don't like going out at night, we've had gunshots fired, uh, up from work, we've had cars shooting at each other. And what does that do? It strains the police department, our chief has so hard tried to maintain. It takes officers away from areas. We have pots of money, we have matchy money. Oh, this little tourism's gonna bring in a million people. Now, Lights River Action, remember that one, when we lit the Centennial Bridge? It's gonna attract people, it's gonna attract more businesses. River Renaissance, it got some of our downtown buildings done. Yeah, we have a few more people here, but you know what? Bottom line, safety. You don't feel safe, you're not gonna come here. It takes a year to train a police officer properly, getting the, the training, uh, the equipment, the cost. If we can come up with five million for our ballpark, six million? I think we need to start looking very hard and take a big step back to make sure each of us as citizens are safer. We feel safe walking the streets, we feel safe going to the store. And then here, well, the city's gonna spend five million on the ballpark. You know what? I don't care, I don't go down to the ballpark. You know why? I don't feel safe, as a citizen, I don't feel safe. But to keep saying, we have to have the amenities, we have a skate park, we have a big soccer field, we've expanded our park system, which requires money, manpower, equipment. We need to take a step back. That man back there needs additional money for training, for equipment. We just had a police pursuit total of squad car. You know what? They're not cheap. What's it gonna take for this city to open their eyes and go after what we need? The citizens are going to Eldridge, they're going to Leclerc, and they're going to Bluegrass, why? Why hasn't this city grown like it should've the last thirty years? Why? That's a big question. Now I have a challenge for the city administrator, who I think is a wonderful lady, does a wonderful job. Mayor, I have a challenge for you and the city council. Let's get some more funding for our department. We're looking at programs that are gonna take years. In the meantime, we need the department fully staffed and more people staffed, because they are deterrents. The chief's right, we cannot arrest ourselves out of here. And with Scott County, looking at juvenile expanding. And we also need to get our state legislatures involved. We have to change the laws in order to make this a safer community. But it starts with this council, these people, but most of all, I don't wanna see that man go anywhere or any of his officers. I've had issues, I've had troubles over the years, I don't really care. Without them, just think what the city would be like. We ain't got enough officers to cover. Your mom faults, you get shot, bank robbers. What's it gonna take for this city council in this town to wake up? We're running out of time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? Very good, we're adjourned, have a safe evening and weekend.